This is welcome to the Lantros Volca Central School District Board of Education. Please stand for the president. First order of business is to approve tonight's agenda. A motion, please, to approve the agenda. Shelley and Linda, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Tonight, we have some presentations. And Mr. Pullen, I'll turn this part meeting over to you.
Sure.
If you can do the introductions.
I sure will. It's a pleasure to introduce Lila Bundy, who's a fifth grade student here at Leavenworth Middle School. Lila, if you would come over to the podium and get ready for your preparation. She's a fantastic young lady, and I think she's done a lot of input tonight. She's represented by a fantastic family as well. Here's a fun fact for you, that Lila and her mother both transitioned over to the middle school this year. Her mom works in our main office over here and does a great job for us. So, Lila, when you present to the board, if you just push that white button down on the microphone, and then pull the mic down just a little bit, that'll give you a nice public speaking voice like Mr. Hawley back there from high school. Yeah, go right ahead. Yep, with the sound.
Well, I start now?
Yep.
Good evening. My name is Lila Bundy, and I'm a fifth grader at the middle school. I would like to tell you a little about my year in the fifth grade. What I like about school is that the teachers are nice and helpful. They teach us a lot of good and interesting things. Middle school has a lot of subjects. My favorite is writing. When I need help and get confused in math, the teacher explains things to me. I really like gym class because I have a lot of fun playing all the games. I really like that we have had a lot of field trips this year, more than all the other grades in middle school. What I think should change with field trips is that they should be closer and we should stay there longer. We should go to more interesting places, too. Another thing that I think should change is that we should have more time in specials. We usually don't have enough time to finish games. Fifth grade has been a good year so far. I'm really looking forward to next year in sixth grade.
So if you'd just stay there for just a second, in case any of the board members have questions for you, that'd be great. You did a wonderful job. I agree with you. We should visit chimney bluffs and do a study on erosion, it's part of our science program.
Thank you so much, and thank you for offering some suggestions. That shows some real problem solving going on there, and I'm happy to hear that. And I'm glad you're having a good year. And you like writing?
Yes.
We have a future author in our midst. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, with a writer line, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bradley and his school leadership team for the school improvement update.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present our school improvement plan tonight, so that we can share with you some of the work that's taking place at the high school. Before we get started, I'd like to give the members of our team an opportunity to introduce themselves.
Hello, Amber Langley, and I'm a science teacher.
I'm Anna Molly, I teach 12th grade social studies.
Hi, I'm Amy Whitmore Woods, I'm a Spanish teacher and instructional coach at the high school.
We do have a few other members who have other committees tonight, so they're not joining us. So this team is carrying the load. Our school improvement plan is designed with the purpose of supporting the district's strategic action plan to help us carry out the mission and the vision of the district. With that in mind, we've had a few focus areas this year that have really targeted the work that we've done. The first is creating a welcoming and affirming environment for all of our students and staff each and every day. The second is building strong relationships that are genuine and meaningful. And the third is that we strive to always have consistent and clear communication with all of our stakeholders.
So for partnerships, we send home monthly newsletters that are district-wide. In March, at the end of March, we had our second parent-teacher conference night, which was very well-attended, just like our one in the fall. I would say we've seen higher attendance this year, both in the fall and this spring one that we just had. Parents Square has been really helpful for us, being able to get parents to sign up online, as well as responding to email. We also had quite a few parents come in without signing up, and we were able to get slots with teachers. In conjunction, that night, we also had college information that was available to parents. Earlier this year, we had a St. John Fisher College visit, which there was quite a few kids that attended, and that was very well-received. We also have FLCC in Rappport coming up, those opportunities for kids to go into those campuses. For Boys &amp; Girls Day, we have three boys and one girl that will be attending at the end of this year, which is awesome. And we also have one to not for Rotary Award at the end of the year as well.
One thing that we've noticed at the high school is, a lot of the students that tend to struggle in grades nine through 12 often come from families that don't have either a really positive opinion of school. Maybe they had their own troubling experiences in school, maybe they didn't feel supported by their school. And so a lot of our initiatives involving equity have to do with kind of building those moments where those students can have that life-all moment, or that seminal moment, where they'll remember that. And whether that comes during our LIF program, where students are taking part in activities that don't necessarily fit into the classroom, but after school they do kind of explore this with people they may not be in the same classes with, whether it's providing some social-emotional training for teachers, so that they can make stronger connections with students, or whether it has to do with the celebrations that we plan around our music and arts programs, where we invite the community to come see what the students are up to. We also provide kind of some tangible, you know, the Cougar Cupboard provides food for families, that that might be one less thing that they have to worry about, so they might be able to focus on something else. We've also got our summer school program, our extended school year, our fitness center at the high school, our swimming lessons, all these different things to kind of build the school as that hub of the community. Because we can't necessarily plan which of the moments are going to lock into kids' brains that they kind of remember later in life, but we can work to make them positive moments that they remember, and that's our goal.
So, the individual needs of all of our students and staff is something that we continue to focus on this year. For the second time, we offer the SEL survey to our students through Panorama, and it's a great chance to really see where our students are doing well in areas that they might need some more assistance with. And with the students that have areas of need, we use that data to help create groups in our counseling, and also assign students to check in and check out, which is a great program, to help support them and hopefully to work on some of those areas of need. Our staff was able to participate in an awesome professional development day, where they were given choice on what they really wanted to do throughout the day. And so there was options of instructional strategies that they wanted to learn about, that was one, but there was also a lot of other items, like health and wellness, we did some sports, we did some arts and crafts. And this staff, we all really felt like we learned a lot, and it's also a great time to really collaborate with others, and maybe to relax a little, too. So, seniors, we think LoJack, he sets up Cooper Care packages that are for seniors. Staff K-12 are able to write letters to seniors that they once had in their time, these teachers, or actually anybody in the district can write one. And at the end of the year, they will receive all these letters, plus some other goodies, in a bag, which is just one way to show how much, you know, we love and have enjoyed our time with these students. Lastly, we have staff postcards, which staff are able to write home to students and other staff members as a great way to celebrate what is going great with these people. And I shared the story that I actually still have a staff postcard that was sent to my home, and it's sort of cool to see how your family is like, wow, Mom, or my husband at the time, because it's from 14 years ago, I have it in my cookbook, it says my meatloaf recipe. From our future inductee Kathy Poit, to the Hall of Fame, it's from her. It's just one of those special things for students and staff to be able to celebrate things that are going well. Along with that, we do staff and Student of the Month awards tied to our Cooper values, so another way that we're able to celebrate those students who are really working hard in the school.
So when we review our data, it's important that we look at where students are not being successful, so that we can try to utilize appropriate interventions to support them. So in doing so, we regularly analyze our failure rates. And when we look at the data trends here, we can see that what exists throughout the course of a year, and then compare from year to year. So generally, we can see the failures increase from the first quarter to the second quarter, as the year gets more difficult. And students also have a significant amount of interruptions during that second quarter, where you have Thanksgiving, winter break, things like that. Then things tend to settle in for the rest of the year. One promising thing from this data that we look here is that it seems that we are recovering from the interrupted instruction that we saw during the pandemic, and that we see incidents of failure dropping significantly in the first and second quarter of this year compared to last year. Additionally, we want to look at how highly students are performing and take a look at those successes, so that we can celebrate them. When you look at this chart here, any student on the merit or honor roll is a student who receives a grade of 80% or higher. So the grade, the number, it's a little confusing. The number on the left-hand side is the number of students reaching that benchmark, it's not the grade. So 60% of the students there are achieving 80% or higher, which is something to be celebrated, for sure. So with our academic goals, and to help our students achieve the high standards that we set for them, we continue to work towards evolving the Cooper Ops program, where we can increase opportunities for recovery and supporting students with their social-emotional needs, which in turn affects their academic achievement. Our personalized learning coaches have provided professional development opportunities regularly throughout the year, topics including items such as Canva, SlideMania, other instructional technology tools. Our MTSS coaches have led work throughout the year, providing work with our teachers to make sure that there's a viable tier-one instructional model, and then working to make sure that we're utilizing appropriate tier-two and tier-three intervention when needed, including the introduction of the CIPS Plus program at the high school to really focus and support reading for our high school students. Finally, we're planning to bring back our Career and Financial Management course next year. This is a course that had not been taught in the last five-plus years. And our goal with this is to help prepare students with skills that they'll need to be successful after graduation. So topics in this course include things such as budgeting, taxes, credit and loans, investing, the job search and attainment process, business communications, and other like-minded areas. The last goal that we have is our financial goal. And here, we're working to ensure responsible use of district funds to make sure that we're keeping our purchases in line with district initiatives and priorities. This year, we have been able to maximize our arts and education funding, which provides unique and memorable learning opportunities for students, whether that's attending a theatrical performance, or entering a piece of artwork into a show or competition. We've reviewed our practices in regard to oversight of the extracurricular activity funds to ensure that our policies and best practices are followed, and that funds are utilized responsibly. And we've clearly communicated the budget process to our staff as it relates to the 23-24 school year, so that they can plan forward with purpose and make sure that they're utilizing those funds responsibly. And that concludes our presentation for tonight, and we're happy to entertain any questions that you have. Thank you again for the opportunity to share this tonight.
So, did I understand the fiscal management course is coming back?
Career and Financial Management, yeah, we're bringing that back. Yep, start off.
And there'll be procedures, or?
We're actually going to target students earlier, in the year, probably mostly 10th grade students. It won't be strictly for 10th grade students, but that's what we'll target. It's a good offset to help, so they can take it opposite that.
I think this is essential. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. So, Mr. Matthews, I'd like you to come on up and, you know, get your presentation ready for the board. Mr. Matthews is going to present with Mrs. Gilman on behalf of the Cooper Ops program, and they'll get into the opportunities for personal success and what that means for our student body members here in Lantros Volca, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. It's exciting to be here tonight. I wanted to have Julie introduce herself.
Hi, thanks for having me.
And I'm Mark Matthews, here to share with you some updates about Cooper Ops. So, Cooper Ops, we effectively have two sort of smaller departments within our department. That would be the tutoring department and the credit recovery department. Our tutoring offers the opportunity for our students who are suspended to engage in onsite tutoring, where we work to restore relationships, repair harm, any harm that was caused by reasons for suspension, and prepare them for a seamless re-entry into their program when their suspension is ended. We also engage students who are absent for medical reasons in home tutoring. Our credit recovery program, we currently have 65 students, 28 of whom, as you can see, are recovering credits, and 37 are being monitored. Our credit recovery is for juniors and seniors, and while they're recovering credits, we are checking to make sure they're staying on track. We work hard to build relationships with those families and connect those families to district and community resources. A lot of what we do is working on building partnerships. First, we want to create opportunities for two-way communication amongst our school community members and create access to resources. We're pretty flexible with our communication, really to suit the family's needs, what works best for families. We work to be visible in the community and create relationships with local employers. We are participating members in our district in building MTSS teams. And we support our students as they're seeking employment opportunities from that application, preparing for interviews, things like that. We want to make high-quality education accessible to every student. In our tutoring center, there's a one-day turnaround between an assigned suspension and the beginning of tutoring. That's with the help of all our teachers and staff, our building-level administrators, our transportation department. And we also work with OCS Turing Center to identify reliable tutors for kids that are home for medical reasons that were happening. The credit recovery area, every student has an individualized graduation plan specifically for them, depending on what they need. We meet with our families on their terms. Often that means we might stay late, we might come in early, we might go out to a house or go to a workplace to meet with a family member. And our students can recover credit in a variety of ways. Grand Point, that event, are online courses supervised by teachers, so that students can recover credit online. We use Google Classroom, along with our high school staff. Project-based learning is another option for some of our students and/or hardcover materials, so they can work through the assigned tests for whatever course.
We are also incorporating social and emotional learning through both programs. For example, through the tutoring program, one of the benefits of having that onsite is that students are able to maintain their engagement with their IEP counseling and/or their counseling through Family Behavioral Health or Family Counseling Services of the Fender Lakes, for example, which are all services, mental health services, that we are providing in district for families. We are also incorporating restorative practices, so there's an opportunity to restore and repair relationships that may have been damaged resulting in suspension. And we are also building capacity, working with our new transition services, our system of care coordinator, to focus on transitional services. One example of that is study work, which we now have in our building, so the students are able to continue to engage in that program, which is important because they're learning job readiness skills. We're focusing on some of those transitional skills that they need to be ready for work. In the credit recovery program, all of our teachers right now, they're self-certified mental health society. And one of the major benefits, well, several major benefits of that, and they really include just being aware and being able to recognize when students are having struggles, and also being able to respond to those struggles effectively and really help the kids through whatever they're experiencing at the time, which is super important, because most of the students that are in our program are IEs. So, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. So for academics, obviously, we want to put ourselves on a work with 100% of our seniors graduating, being prepared for a successful future. So, part of the benefit of being onsite is that our teachers, our students' teachers, are local and onsite, so they can give our assignments to the students, they can stay current, and they return. They're up to speed with what the students have been learning while living out. And we also have small groups in our tutoring center. It helps a lot of our students stay focused and really reflect on the reasons for their being there. We have our counselor in the credit recovery area, who provides skills support for individuals and groups. We have our graduation plans, as I mentioned. The staff at the high school is highly collaborative with us, and they really help us guide our students through those graduation plans. And we implement small group instruction during the course of the day. So our program needs our Math II grant funding and strategic planning. In the future, we'll look to transition the services that can be purchased by surrounding school districts, and hopefully you'll be hearing more about this in the coming months. So we're open for any questions that people have. Thank you for your time.
Mark, where is the tutoring for, if a student is suspended, where does the tutor meet the child?
So we meet the students right at the front door. We have our tutor who meets the students when they drop off by the bus. So we have three sessions a day, three two-hour sessions a day. And so the tutor escorts the students to and from that location, so they're met right at the front. Since their students are suspended, they have to be supervised at all times. So it's always that scenario, where they're met right at the door, and they're dropped right at the door.
So all students meet at the high school?
Correct.
And do you ever, I know our program is really great, and the statistics are wonderful. Do you ever go to other school districts that have similar programs, to get ideas? Or do you ever share ideas with other schools? I know you want to sell our services.
I have yet to visit another site, the ALC. Our credit recovery area has sort of been known as the ALC for a long time in our district. I think for me, it's been a lot of learning about how that system works. And I think we will be able to do those kinds of things as we move forward. I think for me, I have a better understanding of what we're doing, so that I could really look to compare and potentially provide support to other districts who are trying to do some like things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly, we have Ms. Ruff from the middle school coming over. She's going to be presenting a new course for the Board of Education to consider. Computer science is something that we know of, the state of the world being technology-driven, and artificial intelligence starting to take over in several avenues. It's something that, in order for our student population to keep up, we're feeling like we need to consider a course in computer science and replace our traditionally traditional family and consumer sciences program. So I'm going to turn it over to Crystal, and let her get started with this.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. I am very excited to introduce to you computer science happening at the middle school for next year. So, computer science would be under the content area of technology, and is actually career and technical education within the New York State standards. We would look to offer this at grade six, and this would be a .5 credit in CTE. Middle school students in grades five through eight are entitled to 1.75 units of career and technical education. So I just wanted to take a moment to kind of explain historically how students earn those CTE credits. So in previous years, in grade seven, they would take the FACS, Family and Consumer Sciences, and receive a one credit. And then in grade eight, they would receive one credit in technology, so they would have a total of two credits. Moving forward, we would like to offer at grade five a digital literacy skills class, where students would receive .25 credits. And then in grade six, they would receive .5 credits. Grade seven, they would have health at .5 credits. And then at grade eight, they would have technology at .5 credits. So this would give 1.75 credits for our middle school students to receive that for CTE. With computer science, we are not requesting any additional staff, so this would be taught by our technology teacher. So transitioning from CTE model at the middle school, some factors that we considered were that we had a teacher shortage to teach Family and Consumer Science. So this is not only a problem that we were faced at NRW, but this is a county and state problem as well. We have not been able to secure a FACS teacher this year and provide a well-rounded, engaging curriculum. So as I began to research this, some important information that I just wanted to share as well is that in September of 2017, the Board of Regents voted to amend Section 100.4 of the Commissioners' Regulations Regarding Middle School Level CTE Requirement. So prior to 2017, all schools in New York were required to provide one unit of study of technology education and .75 units of study of Family and Consumer Sciences. However, most districts offered 1.0 for technology and for FACS. Beginning in the 2018-2019 school year, the above regulation was modified to allow 1.7 units of study of CTE required at the middle school level. So this would fall under classes within agriculture, business, FACS, health sciences, technology, and trade and technical subjects. The other important aspect about this is that you have to have a teacher certified in that content area to teach that content. So those were some of the factors that were surrounding our decision to move towards computer science. So, the continuum at the middle school level, currently, our goal per New York State is that we would connect middle school-level experiences to high school opportunities. We would also expose students to all CT content areas. We would allow for flexibility and delivery by using a modular format and foster acceleration into graduation pathways that capitulate into graduation pathways that capitalize on students' interest in CTE content. So, the content areas include, like I said, agriculture, business, and marketing, FACS, health science, technology, and trade and technical education. So, this required credit could be covered within any of those areas. So, we wanted more technology in CTE at the middle school. So, here are some benefits and some of our goals. We are in a 21st century world, and students are exposed to computers and technology at a young age. Students will be equipped with the knowledge and skills needed to utilize devices responsibly and with good citizenship. Early exposure to computer science provides opportunities to practice and develop critical thinking skills. Students will be more prepared for success in the world of work. And our approach at the middle school level focuses on a continuum of CTE courses through grades five through eight rather than just seven and eight. And then engaging students in CTE at the middle school level will help to increase enrollment in CTE courses at the high school level. Some further things to consider, we have our FACS room in this space, which is filled with many refrigerators, microwaves, washer and dryer. So, we would look to utilize this space during our after-school programs such as lift or activity period. We would love to have a cooking club, which we do utilize already. We would also have this space used within our different content areas, specifically opening it up to teachers to be able to kind of go in and sign out this space to use it with students within their content areas. We would utilize areas for diverse life skill lessons among teachers, and specifically special classes can utilize this space to integrate daily life skills. So, we would still use this space currently. New York State Computer Science Digital Fluency Standards include impacts of computing, computational thinking, networks and system design, cybersecurity, and digital literacy. So, with computer science, a core goal at the middle school level is for students to develop habits of creative and collaboration, problem-solving. So, they're introduced to computer science as a way of thinking. Students will learn by doing, they will construct their own understanding in collaboration with their peers, and this work will be deeply rooted in the design-thinking process. And while we cover specific programming languages, the focus will be on learning concepts that can apply not only to computer science but to all aspects of a student's journey as a learner and beyond. So, specifically, the course description, this course, would be offered all year long, and it would be offered every other day. So, it would be designed to introduce students to the field of computer science. They would use project-based instruction, and students would build a knowledge base of computer applications, they would analyze data, internet safety, programming, and problem-solving. And some projects may involve game design, mobile app development, web design, and more. These projects would be designed to develop team building, problem-solving, and creative skills to launch students into the future of computer science courses and careers. We would be using, the program is called CS Exploration from Project STEM. This program is also used in surrounding districts, and it is designed to support middle school students, teachers to the new discipline as well as support more experienced educators. The program does offer professional development and has many resources through the professional development, and it would be directly provided to our computer science teacher. We did receive a full sponsorship through Amazon for the middle school courses that Project STEM offers, and this would include all middle school courses. They have different levels, one, two, and three, one-on-one onboarding call with teachers, professional development, and we would have access to all curriculum, lesson plans, teaching slides, videos, interactive field trips, and much, much more. So, we are very excited about this course, and I would take any questions at this time. Thank you.
I have a question, but I cannot, because Tuesday evening I was able to go to Wayne Finger Lakes in a meeting. Prior to that, there were students that were talking about their CTE experiences there, and it was very impressive. And I'm thrilled that it's starting at the middle school here, because some of those students don't get to enter the program until, well, sophomores, not used to be juniors, but coming back to let kids see that there's more out there that might be better for them in this grade. Thank you.
I think, Crystal, I think this is a great idea. I'm a little disappointed that we can't find staff to provide the traditional FACS, because I do think that that's also a good experience for our students. But I really think that, you know, the thought that you put into this and making sure that, you know, you're looking at fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students is really powerful. Thank you.
I had a similar comment, that I think it's a real shame that whoever, whatever impulse of, has decreased the number of certified teachers to teach what I would call a very valuable life skills course. I mean, we've spoken about having the COVID years, not having in-class, and a lot of skills lacking, and now we have mental health money to be spent. The home and careers teachers did most of that as a routine basis years ago. And not to have that is a real lack, and I don't think our girls will fit for that. It's just, I don't know what happened in this state, why those teachers aren't there. If I had a, if I were that age, I'd get my certificate in that, and you could have a job any place in the state that you wanted. So, the, I just want to recap on the, there are modules available through Amazon and through the government to teach this, to assist in teaching these modules.
So, it's a curriculum program, it's called CS Exploration, and Amazon is funding it. So, through that program, there's curriculum that is offered for the teacher that's provided for them, that they can implement, they can modify, they can adjust, so it's a nice foundation for us as we build this program.
That's super. They found a need to bridge that gap. Our tech teacher will be able to, is certified to teach this course, though.
Yes, he is certified to teach the course, so he will be moving to teaching grade six every other day for computer science, and then technology every other day for eighth grade.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Mr. Poland, we'll move on to reports and correspondence. Linda, do you have anything as liaison to the elementary school? Do you have anything to report?
No, I suppose I'm on a trip. They're preparing the kindergarten screening, which will be happening next month. And also, at this time of year, there's a blood file preparation going in place for the LA exam assessments. They continue to recognize students every month. That Koby Club is on the ways for students amongst that present as outstanding young people for whatever that particular theme is for the month. And they also have opportunities where they recognize students for being awesome readers as students, and they're recognized as well.
Paul is not with us yet. Tina, do you have anything from the high school?
Scott provided papers and things. I don't mind you, Paul. Okay. So, on March 31st, the Easter propaganda was proved to be a huge success, over 600 community people attended. Huge shout-out to Maureen Mahoney, who really was implementing, implemented the whole thing and landed. It was, sounds like she did a lot of work. Highlights were just that we had chorus students that posted and karaoke. Our art club was there with face painting. The bank kids under current Carolyn Struck were welcoming families with a name and a tune. Really loved to see them. Class of 2023 seniors helped to earn community service hours during this time, so we've had a lot of involvement from our students as well. There were booting games with community numbers and volunteers, the Alt to Present to highlight future community events. Dara was there to promote help with this campaign. And then Most was there under June Udo's direction with fun games. Same at the same time, we had a little sign-ups, and Cooper Parent Group hit over 4,000 eggs that were filled with goodies that sounds like it was good time. There were raffles, and the Easter bunny was there as well. Class of 2026 did a make and take craft stations that were funded through a grant under Lori Elliott. So, it sounds like just everybody came together and really just promoted our, the school, the community, and it worked out real well. Then there were a group of 25, second, a group of 25 students will be attending a field trip to AKMEX to learn about CNC machine tools, and there'll be job opportunities discussed at the same time. College and Career Night, which was mentioned earlier, but was, it sounds like, again, big successes, held some things with fair conferences, and parents were, colleges were there in presence, so it was just a nice time to go through and see what's up for that way. On April 11th, 20 students went to Jiva to see and so she walked. So, the high school's been pretty busy place. In addition to getting really, getting prepared for end of year, which is this is a huge time at the high school level, so it's going well.
Thank you. Linda, is there anything from the forecourt?
Well, we all honor the fact that there was a very impressive session on school safety and security that occurred with our superintendent involved in that. I have had a lot of feedback and discussions from people that attended that really felt that was one of the best products coming out for improving our understanding, and it was, personally, I really felt that there was a lot of information that we never would have been aware of if that, the individual that didn't have the FBI background and so on, went through so systematically and showed us step-by-step what occurred, why it occurred, how it occurred, and how schools could be more prepared. And I felt proud and impressed that we were highlighted as a district that had the talent and how effective it would be to be what he was promoting. So, that's, that. And then upcoming Tuesday, there is a professional development that could be, he's a very zooming person that we need to let Tina know if we're interested in taking part.
Thank you, Linda. Handbook, as you've done nothing, we haven't had to do anything. Audit John, is there anything from your committee?
No.
Jason, Bill, and what else?
We have meetings today, we'll report it next meeting.
Okay. And the district's safety?
Our next meeting is April 26th, so we'll report that as well.
The alternative learnings and outreach is our Cooper House, right? We've just had a great report on that. All right. Well, you've got a God of Easy to matter, yeah. All right, and there are the policies for first read. Paul is in here, but Shelley, or, oh, something else?
Paul just reached out to me before we came in and asked me just to say that there were four revisions, minor revisions, both of these rewrites, and they were approved by legal. And the voting, student voting policy, the new policy, he said it's a required policy.
Okay. Moving on, Tina, is there anyone who signed up for public access?
No, there isn't.
No? All right, thank you. Then we move on to page two and the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent, John and Tina. Discussion. Consent agenda goes from page two through page five. All right, in that case, all in favor of approving the items on consent agenda. That motion is carried. Now, we're at number six on our agenda. Motion, please, to approve the valid board appointments. Linda and Jason, any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. A motion, please, to approve the items listed under policies. That would be a second read. Motion, please. Shelley and Tina, any discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Number eight. A motion to approve the adoption of the 2324 budget spending plan. Motion, please. John, Eric, Linda. Discussion. All right, then I will ask Tina to please call the board.
Cinda?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul, absent. Thank you, motion is carried.
The motion is carried. A motion, please, to approve the no property tax report cut. Motion? Jason? Tina, would you call the board again?
Cinda?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul is absent, thank you, motion is carried.
Motion is carried. We come now to the board member requests, comments, and discussion. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say or present? Jason?
I would like to request that Superintendent Poland investigate expanding the UPK program. I have put its value to our school district and our community to engage with our students a little earlier in their career, and I know that that creates success with the number of the pads, so if you could do that, I would appreciate it.
Well, let's see. We will, according to our handbook, it's up to the whole board. So, does anyone wish to make comments about Jason's proposal? Or ask questions or anything? Jason's handbook. Okay.
I know we've already started in that direction, because, you know, we now have preschool kids here that we've heard before. So, I know we're heading in that direction, I think it's a good way to go. I see a benefit, Shelley?
I do as well.
Thank you.
As soon as we can get our students here, better this, our district.
All right, and down here, who has started on? John? And me too. So, Mr. Poland, you have a job to do here, a little extra, but it's a good one.
It's very good.
Yes, it is. Great, thank you. Any other discussion or, okay, we move on. Does anyone have good news they want to share?
Yes, I have a whole-page article from the Wayne Times, and it's not an ad, it has to do with recognizing by the board supervisors of Wayne County, special proclamation, North Rose Wilkett athletes, and we have Duke Mitchell, we have the coach, and we have Ashton Fernandez, who's a runner, and Jack DeFeo, who's also a runner, and did very, very well, and sold us at the first track meet. Also, we have our wrestling coaches in there, and our weight class of Alan Anthony is honored in the 172 weight class. And on the next page over- And on the next page over, we have Noah Wazinski honored for wrestling as well, who was coach and the board supervisor. And Vivian Bishop, who is honored as a slalom champion. And she is the, I think probably only one or two in from North Rose Wilford, but she participated in a select group and does very, very well in ski slopes. And we have our AD in the picture as well, which is good to see.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You know, I didn't comment, but I just want to thank Mark. You talked about when you, you meet parents where they are, you'll stay later, come in early, go to their house. I really thank you for that because I think that is very significant in moving our students forward and our families. So thank you to you and your team. I also want to thank Mr. Blankenberg. Yesterday, he was umping. So he was, I mean, that's significant when we have our athletic director who will also be the umpire. So, thank you, did a great job.
What was also great, I think, Shelley, was that Mr. Blankenberg gave instruction because they're a middle school modified sport athletes and they're not supposed to be polished as they're going to be in three, four years. And he gave them a number of the advice and how to throw the ball, how to pitch, or how to play ball, which I think was great because it was a learning for them.
That's what modifies our ball.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the calls were really decent, too.
There was one other question, but that's okay.
Oh, that's super all of that. That concludes our agenda. Oh, there's one more?
Well, I just wanted to point out the fact that our board president conducted at the Bascen Teno on Tuesday, she had a blood party that participated and opened the event and it was a very, it was a very good job, well done, but it was a very important occasion and so many people participated. And hopefully, there were students there as well participating from various districts.
Well, thank you. We call ourselves just a bunch of dingaling, so, Linda, please. Thank you, Linda.
Mrs. Diller, I'd like to make a comment on our curriculum report, the atlas. I had to figure out what that was, so I, and she had very distinct, clear directions on how to get to it on the website. So I went to the website and I looked it up and I typed, or not typed it, but activated a few of curriculums as a parent would. And I was impressed, really impressed with the samples because a parent can now look at what their child, it's an overview, it's not specific. This is overview on what they're going to get in a year from a specific teacher and a specific course. I thought that was well done. Thank you for putting the directions in.
Anyone else? All right. We've completed the agenda. We do have to move into executive session. So at this time, I'd like a motion to go to executive session for purpose of the board to discuss a contractual agreement. Motion, please. Jason and Linda, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We will be moving into executive session. We will not be coming back, we will not be coming back to the new business. We'll come back to a journey, that's all. Thank you for coming.